Calling a regular council meeting Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 to order. Please rise when required.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get the approval of the agenda? We do have two things to amend the certificates of recognition. Ms. Shelton will come to our next meeting, weather permitting, to receive her certificate. And under Mayor Councilmember reports, number one, Newcastle ambulance service, due to weather and road closures, we'll reschedule them for the next meeting as well.
Let me hear, I move that we approve the agenda.
What's it like in Chicago?
A mended agenda.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of Monday, February 6th, 2023.
Mayor, I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have any nominations for recognition? I'm going to be swearing in police officer Sergeant Derek Thompson. Can you come on up? You can do this in the right hand and repeat after me. I, Derek Thompson.
I, Derek Thompson.
Do some when we swear.
Do some when we swear.
And affirm that I will support.
And affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And... And the Constitution... And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
On board.
Thank you.
No, that was great. Citizens Business and Writing, Robert Cobrely, sewer forgiveness. Y'all have a copy of this letter in front of you. To the City of Newcastle, from Robert Cobrely. I'm looking for sewer forgiveness. We had a water leak at our second house in the utility room under the house that has no sewer drain. The billing is for 121222 to 11223, and 11223 to 21223 will be affected. Thank you for looking into this, Robert Cobrely. And forgiveness is for $446.84 for four months.
So how did it go two months?
It's... They don't live in that second house.
So they were already...
Yes. They... Well, they did get the first bill, when they got the first bill, or when Heather was doing the readings for that first month, is when she noticed it, when she was doing billing. But it had probably been 15 days in between that would have been on the second bill.
Also, the water for that house is supplied to the first house, so they're all on over here.
The next one didn't go into the sewer as noted then. So I'd make a motion that we would approve the $446.84 for sewer forgiveness for Robert Cobrely.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Um, I have some. So how many gallons did they use?
I don't remember off the top. It was in excess of a hundred thousand.
Over 90,000, I believe.
Ninety, a hundred thousand.
I mean, that's a significant amount of water. They, uh... Nobody noticed this for two months.
From what I understand, they were not home.
Oh, they were out of town?
Yeah. And this is a second residence on the single piece property, so...
Did it do any damage to the house, or...
I... Bob didn't mention. I'm not sure whether it did or not. We were mainly looking into the fact whether it went down the sewer. Man, that's really all we observed.
Okay.
So what's the water tenure rule? Five thousand gallons?
Yeah. Four thousand.
Got them washed out?
That's what I was thinking, you know, with this big amount. It was... That was a big water leak.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to number two in writing, First State Bank, First Northern Bank, application for deposit of funds.
Your Honor, I move that we approve First Northern Bank of Wyoming, so application for the funded funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Just one question, I guess I didn't get in there. When you said First Northern Bank, when I'm reading this piece in here, one says it's for the First State Bank and one for the First Northern Bank. So is that motioning with state both bank? I know they're the same, but the wording that they've got in their letter is, one said it's for First State Bank and the other one the wording for Northern.
Well, I'll amend my motion to include the First State Bank.
I was under the impression that they changed it, First Northern.
Me too.
It just changes at a certain date.
In March, I think it is.
Oh, so it has not changed yet.
Well, it has and it hasn't. Because when you... To me, when I'm reading this, it's two different sets, because it says "and".
Right, that's what it says. Well, I'm saying two different sets.
Right. I just wanted to be sure the motion, because you only made a motion for one bank.
That's true. And I amended my motion to include the other one.
Sorry I didn't catch that on three, it was at the same time, but it was more...
Yeah, I didn't catch it really.
Need a vote again, since he amended his motion?
We just need a second.
We haven't voted on the motion yet.
Oh, I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Federal, Ed Peaslee.
Newcastle council members, from there. Appreciate being here. I guess, you know, they say complaints are constructive, maybe, you know? And I just, I would rather title these questions as complaints, but you draw your own conclusions. Number one, I'm opposed to getting rid of deer. The other day, a game of cartons down in the creek behind the Taco John's, the old building. I didn't see him, my neighbor reported this to me. Anyway, he shot two deer, loaded them up, and took them. Now, did he kill them, or did he tranquilize them? I'd like to know. Do you people know?
I didn't know they would take them.
That's one of my questions. Some of the deer are pregnant. You don't need glasses to see that. And you know, the deer, you know, it's controversial, I know. But where I live, one of the reasons I like the deer, it slows people down from driver. We got a lot of speeders going by. Anyway, the game and fish, I suppose, you know, they'll be billing the city for doing this. I mean, you know, that's normal. Everybody charges everybody, but that's your problem. But you know, the deer, someday, if you keep up with the food business anymore, there's been over 200 food processing centers, businesses, that have burnt down mysteriously. We might be eating these deer one of these days. You know, you don't... Anyway, when the weather gets, you know, better, I think the deer are gonna migrate, they either north or out in the west. But anyway, did you people... You know, I miss a lot of things. I'm just a normal person. But did you have a hearing on this, or was it just nobody come, or what was it?
No, there was quite a bit of people in there for it.
So we've had, we had quite a few people come and complain about the deer.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, but...
And I, I was an advocate for the Chapter 56 permit because I worked for the city shop. And they used to have to remove the carcasses from people's land when they were diseased and sick, and they would go and die on people's places. And it was always a very pleasant experience, only you have to haul them out of there, so... Um, you know, and I also personally feel that the population of deer in town are not healthy. They don't look healthy. Some of them can't control their bowels. They look mangy. And then another thing with Chapter 56 is the carcasses will be used. People are going to eat the deer that are harvested within city limits.
We call that roadkill.
Well, you can call it what you want, but people are gonna be eating from there.
I agree with you.
Understood.
Well, anyway, you know, I just, I'm putting my two cents in, you know? Since, you know, I served up here for 10 years, and since I've been living here, this city, and I'm not blaming you people, yet, but you people up at this city, since I've been here, and I served here 10 years, and witnessed a lot of other stuff, you know, this city has been against chickens, pigeons, cats, and now deer.
Well, I beg to differ, sir. I just got the chickens in with this council.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying. Years ago, I had a police chief when I was here, and he went up to Cash's, where Cash's ceramics is, he poisoned the pigeons. And I don't like to take note from somebody that does stuff like that. And I challenged him on Meet United, that, you know, they all got in the street, we had to pick them up, but... You know, those things happen. But anyway, I just wanted to give you my two cents on the deer, and I did. Next I got, oh, is streets, and it, I guess it would be a complaint, you know? I talked to a fellow yesterday, I've got, I've got a little list here, but I talked to a fellow yesterday, and he's telling me about some guys moving to town. And I said, "Well, that's great." He said, "Why would anybody wanna move to town here?" He said, "Look at our streets." And I hear that all the time, and I've heard it since I was up here. Anyway, I don't know if you, if you people write this down, or record it, or whatever. If you go down behind the power and lights, where the road goes under the railroad track, that street there has had holes in it, I'd say for two or three years.
Underneath?
At least fixed.
Underneath the railroad track?
No, main road, before you started going to the...
Oh, coming down...
Coming down the hill, on Pine Street. That street is bad. It needs to be fixed. If you go farther down the street, around the corner, used to be John Job had a TV repair shop there. John Larson lived across the street. There's a hole there. I didn't go measure it. I wanted to. But anyway, somebody think I dug it maybe... It's a foot deep and a foot wide. Now, you people have city vehicles, and they hit that, you know what it does to them? I'm a mechanic, my son's a mechanic. It's costing you money. And this thing needs to be fixed. Number three, you go down the street a ways, used to be Fulton's house on the corner. The address is 500 Pine. Okay? It's out in the street, and it's an eight-by-eight thing, and it's been there for three years. Nobody will fix it. Why?
What do you mean, an eight-by-eight thing?
It's an eight-by-eight hole, that they put gravel in, and nobody will patch it or fix it. It was dug, I guess, I think it was a Fulton house across the street, and I think that was dug for sewer. I don't know, water sewer something. But anyway, that, you know, that needs to be fixed.
So you're talking on Mystic?
Huh?
It's on, it's actually, it's kinda on Mystic. It says 500 Pine, 500 Pine.
I'm sorry, 500.
Pine.
Okay.
Pine, yeah.
It's on Mystic too.
Okay, Mr. Kingston. I have to interrupt you, because we have a public hearing, as advised, advertised for 7:15 to renew liquor license.
Yeah.
Can I put you on hold for just a minute while you shoot this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Come sit down.
All right, so as advertised at 7:15, we're having a public hearing for renewal of liquor license. The notice of the application, renewal of retail liquor license is for 2023 to 2024. This notice is hereby given on the 14th day, well, it's today, the 14th day of 2002. The following eight retail liquor license, one club license, two bar and grill license, one restaurant license, file applicant, applications for renewal of liquor license, protest if there be any, against the issuance of these licenses will be heard at this hour of 7:15 PM on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, in Newcastle City Council Chambers at City Hall, Newcastle, Iowa. Liquor license number one, Perkins Tavern LLC, doing business as Perkins Tavern. Liquor license number two, Short Stop, number one, LLC, doing business as Short Stop Fuel Mark. Liquor license number three, Duckers Food Center of Newcastle, Inc., doing business as Smoke Shop Liquors. License number four, Cap'n Bottle LLC, doing business as Cap'n Bottle. Liquor license number five, B&amp;D Holding Newcastle LLC, doing business as... Commercial? Second, third, number... Okay, that's the Deckers. Liquor license number six, Mini Mart, Inc., doing business as Woben Jug. Liquor license number seven, BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing business as Gasway. Liquor license number eight, Maverick, Inc., doing business as Maverick. Bar and Grill number one, Isabella's LLC, doing business as Isabella's. Bar and Grill number two, Newcastle Lodge and Convention Center LLC, doing business as Grazer's Burgers and Beer. Club license number one, Newcastle Country Club, doing business as Newcastle Country Club. And restaurant number five, Curly Q's LLC, doing business as Curly Q's Diner.
And the B&amp;D one was Deckers?
Yes. Your Honor, do we have to go back out of the thing, of the voting of these people? We're in a session, and now do we have to stay in the session?
No.
Because there isn't anybody here to talk about it.
What?
I did have one question to the chief of police. Do you, are there any known violations amongst these people that you know of, or that your officers know of, that are, you know, shoving beer out the back door to teenagers or anything?
We haven't been alerted to any of that.
That's a good thing. Not for the teenager.
And other questions, real motion?
I move that we accept the renewal of the liquor licenses.
A second.
And the bar, grill, club, and restaurant.
Okay, and, and the restaurant people in the back there.
Oh, do we have to mention that? I mean, it's renewal of liquor licenses, right?
Well, they're different kinds, though.
Okay. I, I move that we approve the liquor licenses for the bar and grill, country club, and other establishments.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Hold it.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. You may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Still on the streets, real short and sweet, but I live at the corner of Mystic and Birch, and it's one of the worst, I feel. I haven't drove that much around town, found any new ones, but I think it's one of the worst blind corners in town. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, that's your choice. Anyway, we have not had this street plowed or sanded for about three or four years, until recently, I think it was a week or two ago, they come down with a blade. Now, I go outside, we had, I think, two years ago, we had a wreck, fireplug across the street, about 11 o'clock at night, and the street's got quite a slope to it from Pine, Mystic. And anyway, I heard this commotion. Anyway, this guy comes down the hill, or down the road, I should say, it's the same here, pardon me. Anyway, he slid and hit the fireplug, boogered his outfit, you know? And I did, I went outside to see, you know, what it was, and by then, the police had came, and, you know, they got him, a wrecker or somebody pulled him out, and boogered his pickup up. But anyway, after that, I go outside, and when it's icy, and it's been icy, till I come and blade it the other day, and I throw shale from my basement down there to kinda help people out, or saw it, I burn wood. But, you know, we should have somebody, you know, to tie in with us. I look down the street towards Second Avenue, there's a road grader down there. They plow that street, they're in a stitch of snow on that street, and there's, nobody lives there. We have people living on Birch, that's my address, Birch. Nobody plows it. I haven't. Why? I'd like to know. Are we off limits? You know, I don't, I don't get it. I seen a plow truck go by one day, excuse me, and he had a blade on the front, and he didn't have a doubt, he just went by on the blade. And we've never had sand on nice streets, I'd say for two or three years.
I think, I think your areas, I'll give you the priority five, but to answer the other questions, can you...
We have plowed it in the last three or four years. Last year, there wasn't a lot of snow, so there wasn't much to do. But we do regularly sand all streets. Not everybody notices, because what we are using now is a...
First Avenue.
It's a mag chloride, it turns to liquid, and you don't see the sand necessarily on the road surface.
Well, we, excuse me, we used to, I can't remember, a couple of years ago, when I'd come up here once in a while, I don't remember for what, but anyway...
That's the problem.
Yeah, not that. Anyway, Pine Street used to be a priority for this city to plow it and get it open, and the same way from Deckers down for the senior center, so then people can come in and out of it. I haven't been going there lately, so I don't know, but the Pine Street, per se, from, from the power and light down, it was just like riding a horse through there. I mean, they plowed it here, what, a couple of weeks ago, week and a half ago? And, you know, it was in pitiful shape, it was not plowed. Like, that road used to be a priority for this town. Maybe it isn't now, I don't know.
It is as a bus route.
It is a bus route.
Anyway, I guess, I guess you could say that was complaints, you know? Anyway, I'm gonna move on to streetlights and then go home. Like I said, I live at the corner of 121 Mystic, okay? It's on the side there, and I live on Birch Street. We have a streetlight over there, that streetlight has been out for three years.
Is it on a round pole?
Three years.
Yeah.
So guess what happened? My neighbor at 121, I think about, I can't, a year ago, six months ago, she had a house in Upton. The people, and her husband, and they were moving out, and moved to this 121 Maxine Call's house, okay? She happens to see a power and light guy in Upton, and she said, "Hey, our light's out and been out for three years. Can you come and fix it?" And he said, "Yeah, he come and fixed it." It's on now, okay? But why did it take that long to do it? Now, when I was mayor, we had somebody go around and count these streetlights, and we paid so much a light for them. Do you still do that?
Well, the officers at night can let us know if lights are out, but we do get in contact with Black Hills Power and let them know when we know there's certain lights out.
You know, I mean, I don't know if, if you, people are supposed to do it, or the power and light, but you know, if, if I'm selling power and lights to you people, the lights are gonna be on, or else you get a credit. I mean, that's how it works, isn't it? Or a shrimp work.
You silly man.
You know, maybe that's good wish, you know, I don't know.
Well, it always helps to know, or be reported to us as well, so we can let Black Hills Power know. So, I mean, I'm not out at night either, driving around town looking at lights, but when, when people do let us know they're out, we do get them repaired. We do let Black Hills Power know.
Well, I realize, you know, that they, they have to come and fix it, you know? Now, we got another one. South Pine is right opposite me, that's that gravel one, they call it a street, but you know, we don't into that. But anyway, my neighbor used to live down there. Mr. Chuck Pomegranth, and they had a new light, and they put it in the, in that alley, they go up an alley, street, whatever you wanna call it. They had to move it down in one notch, on a pole. That light has been out, I think he's been dead for three or four years, and that light is still out. It does not burn, and that's just pitch black, and, and that, you know, security would be in the police line, I feel, to have some lights on, you know? Maybe I'm wrong. But anyway, that light has not been on, and if you go up where I told you the eight-by-eight hole was in, in the street, okay, that used to be Lawrence Fulton's house, okay? There's a street light there on that corner. He, he might drive by when, when this is over, I don't know, sometime, and you'll say, "Well, I occasionally don't know what the hell he's talking about." It flickered, on and on, it's on, then it's off. There's something wrong with it, it needs to be fixed. But, you know, I can't crawl up and fix it, but, you know, to me, it's a security issue to get these lights fixed. But, you know, that's, that's your choice, you're running it, I'm not.
We'll get in touch with Black Hills Power and let them know that area, as well as some of the other areas that we have.
But I'm told, you know, also, that there's other lights like this around town, but I don't go around town. You know, I'm not looking for trouble, I'm just trying to see what, what the hell is out there, you know? But anyway...
Thank you for bringing us here. Thank you for bringing yourself.
Thank you for listening to us.
Don't go over there, Ed. Tell, tell just a little bit more about that blind corner. And that, that's a very important thing that you just said, but you kind of skipped by it. But tell me about the blind corner.
Wow.
Birch and Mystic.
It's kind of dangerous, 'cause we park on it, you know, we park in the front of our house.
It's a hard and empty right there, and then there's a, and the South Pine.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll go way back. We, when we moved to the neighborhood, 500 Pine, that was up one house, two houses from where I'm at now. That street was mud, and it had bludgeon it that deep. Okay, so when we finally got, Mort Call was an instigator across the street, 121 Mystic. We guessed together, and I done the curb in front of my house, which was 208 Mystic, that went down from 500 Pine. I done that one, everybody done their own, and Custis lived across the street, he done his, Mort Call done his, and the guy that lived at my house done half of 500, 503 Birch, okay, 'cause I'm a corner. Okay, when he done the street, we was lucky to get it, you know, happy, all that good stuff, but he made the damn street too narrow. And the reason he done it was, and I'm mean-mouthing Mr. Custis, I guess, but he built a building there on it, and you know, you couldn't make it anywhere. So they just, you know, we'll make the street here. So anyway, some days you're damned and damned, but anyway, so they made the street too narrow, you know, and that's one of the problems. And then you come around the corner, and it's a blind corner, and then there we got a big wide street, Birch Street. But, you know, you'd have to come and look at it, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, I'm gonna make it bigger, but this, the, the actual danger we've had, I don't know how many, we, my son and me have pushed cars out of there. I won't mention any names, cause we'd laugh, but anyway.
People got scared.
The guy pulled over to see Maxine Call, and he's not, I would say from here, you know, around here, anyway. He got stuck, and he, you know, tried to go, so my son and me go out to push him, and it's uphill all the way to Pine, and we tried pushing him, in a front wheel drive, and tires all wore out, you know, jump. Tired, anyway, I said, if you ever get it going, there's a stop sign up there, Pine, don't stop, keep going, look, you know, and keep going, or we'll be up to pushing him again. And we spent about a half hour pushing. So anyway, we finally got him going, and he kept cutting the wheel towards the curb, you know, and I said, no, bro, we gotta hit in the middle of the street. And we had about that much snow on the street, this was several years ago. So anyway, got him going, he got going, guess what he done? He went about thirty feet, and South Pine, you know, was that alley I call a street, he turns in there, and that's up to you. And you head down towards McIntosh's Way, it's up a little more hill. So I don't know, man, so anyway, he did get it backed up, and he took off, and I hope he don't ever come back again. Anyway. Little humor there, not much, but anyway, thanks for listening to me, I'm gonna go home.
Mr. Keeler, I'd like to respond to your statement about the streets. So my personal opinion is that when our streets started to go south, was when we gave up the chip and seal program. So we quit chip and seal on our roads. And I worked on the roads when I worked at the shop for quite a few years, and the, the streets that were chip and sealed last are in the best shape.
Yeah.
So, that was something that I was really proud of since I've been on the council, is
Well, actually, both sides have.
We've instituted the chip and seal program, and we've started to come back and try to rescue some of these streets.
Oh.
But I mean, we've gotten so far behind
Yeah, you can't.
That it, it, it's daunting, but I can understand your frustration, I, I had to patch those potholes. But I understand your frustration, but, I mean, we're, we're trying, but it's like, uh, it's like peeing on a fire, a house fire sometimes, you know.
Anyway, yeah, well, it's, I just, you know, I, I think that was complaints, some of them, you know, but
Yeah, you gotta say the one.
But anyway, I thank you for listening to me, and I think the next time I come, I'll be a little more happy. Thank you.
Take care of all of you.
Good night.
Good night, see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, number one city administrator. I know you guys gave us kind of a draft last meeting. I don't know if everybody had a chance to go through it. Have any questions or changes or additions?
Where do we go from here is the question? What's next?
We have to look at, you know, wage. And then if we want to get it implemented, you know, we would have to add that position. So we would have to make a motion there and then get it advertised.
You've been doing a lot of, what's one of those people get paid generally around the area or in Wyoming?
Basically, what I saw was the ballpark of about seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Was about average.
What's your opinion? What are you thinking about this?
I think it's probably the way we probably need to be looking at doing, you know, obviously, when our, what we've looked at is an engineer, we've done a lot of work through in the last several years with several engineers that we've had since I've been in this community.
Years more?
But is it something that we need to do what we're needing for the city? You know, obviously, grant writing should be the top priority piece of this in order to get fixed streets. So we can drive tire trucks on them.
There you go.
But, you know, I think the city administrator, I think, is the way we probably should need to be going right now. One thing that I've been thinking about the last couple of weeks, I just have not had time to get to it, but I was gonna put in the wording that we talked about. That this person position wouldn't be the sole top everyone pones up to. That we wanted to make sure the wording was in there that each department head was their own department leader. That this position was a resource and they kind of did the day-to-day stuff.
They wouldn't be able to fire anybody else.
Yeah. So those pieces that we talked about last meeting, I hadn't had time to update that piece. If that was the wording I wanted to put into it to give back to everyone, make sure that that was actually in there that we discussed.
So do we want to get that wording in there and kind of do it all through email? And then at our next meeting, review it and make a motion for that?
I think.
That work?
And McCollum, what do you think about all this and the city administrator? What's your opinion?
I'm for the city administrator. I don't know about, I mean, because we've talked about that all this, I've mentioned it.
Councilman, what's? What's your opinion about the whole idea? And you read the stipulations we were coming up with?
I'm with Donnie on this one. We need separation of his job and the rest of everyone else's job.
Well, yeah, we don't want to mess with the chief of police or anybody anyway. Mr. Downs, what do you think about all this?
Yeah, we need.
Okay.
I think it'd be something to just advertise and just make the changes to the kind of the job description.
So money-wise, are we okay? I mean, what we paid Mike?
Stacy?
I mean, I believe so. And chances are that we will be pretty close to getting ready for next year's budget before we find anybody.
Right.
It's been something that we've rolled around for a long time, since my last.
And I just think we need to move on instead of just keep rolling.
We could start advertising for it and get the, like you said, get all that little kinks and stuff.
So that budget time, we are kind of ready.
Which committee is doing it?
Personal.
Personal. We've kind of got the main need of it there, but you know, if anybody's had a chance to go through it and want to tax anything out of it or thought of something that they need, that we need to add to it. That was the only thing that I was thinking of between the last meeting and the last few days. And anyway, just making those wording changes in there that it's known that this person position is not like a main department head and everybody's got an answer to them during budget time and resource time. That everyone is basically managing their own departments. And I feel that's important.
And it's gonna be a salary or?
It should be salary.
And we should be gonna emphasize the grant writing too.
I'm happy with that.
Would it give them a more incentive if they had a percentage of the grants as a bonus or?
I don't know if we can do that.
I think that's illegal when a city does it.
Okay.
I'm not sure. We don't have, Mr. Hughes, a private company. Different. He's the name might be able to do that, but yeah, I think we're being present. Some bad territory doing that.
Okay. Okay. So next meeting, would maybe have an ad designed up?
Seven seven?
Cool.
So are we going to move forward with the motion? Because if so, then I move that we start advertising and marketing for a city administrator for the city of Newcastle.
I'd second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? I think that we could probably do the advertisement, but we still need to get the kinks out and pay for the square void for sure too. So we could probably advertise, but then pay will be, I guess, maybe D O E.
Is the payroll gonna be the seventy-two or?
That's what I just said. Maybe.
Depending on experience.
Yeah, D O E depending on experience.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. So we'll work on a ad for that. All right, chapter fifty-six. Is there anything that needs to be updated on that plan?
Yeah, I had it wrote on the agenda. I don't matter because, I mean, it was a really busy meeting, last meeting, but we had talked about going forward with the resolution for the lethal removal of deer within city limits. But so attorney Hughes had provided us with a resolution. So I think the only thing left to do is to read the resolution and. So Dublin, weren't you gonna send the resolution to Chief Bowles? And you sent it to myself. I told you I thought it looked good.
Yes, I sent it. I think it would have been right after the phone call today. And I did get a response from Chief Bowles saying that he would look at it. I don't know what his thoughts are on it, but I figured we'd probably get those before we move forward. And then from there, we can also go. Because I believe the council actually did state that we can probably move forward with a resolution. So I think it's fine if we do use that as old business and pass that resolution tonight. Now, it's up to the council to do so.
I mean, being that we dropped the ball last meeting because I thought we were gonna address this and get the resolution read last meeting, but it was so busy, I didn't bring it up. But I'd really like to see it get passed tonight.
What's the resolution number?
Oh, let's look here. I think seeing that it's the newest twenty twenty-three would be the first one that we've had.
No.
Yeah, it's either the third or the fourth.
I mean, I'd like to see it get done tonight, but if we need to shore some things up, being that we've gotten to this point, we're kind of late now.
Well, I mean, I'm tired because it's not until.
Well, the idea was, Madam Mayor, that we were gonna be able to get it passed so that we could start working on it now. But then now it looks like it's probably not gonna happen until next fall after hunting season. So I don't think that we have to push this forward if things aren't prepared.
I'd like to have a chance to read through it before I vote on it. I'd hate to vote on something I don't.
A resolution in the dark.
Understood.
Now, someone, oh, it's just to clarify real quick. Is there a time, is there a specific timeline as to that permit? Are you gonna have to refile for that next, come next season?
No, Dublin, what happens is it goes from the issue date for a year. So you won't have to file for it again until after the first of the year.
Okay, perfect, makes sense.
So, yeah, it runs from January first until December thirty-first.
Okay.
If we can all get sent that resolution as well, Dublin?
I can do that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I guess Stacy has it on our next agenda. Moving on to department heads, city clerk, treasurer, Stacy?
I don't have much to report. We've been working with Public Works Department on the new asset management. That will be very interesting and will be very, very helpful in the future. That's all I have.
Any questions for city clerk? Public supervisor, Grace Sump?
Thank you, Madam. Few highlights, the Well Five project. Probably won't progress much this week with the incoming weather. They're having a difficult time getting out of Gillette and getting here, so. They are up to the last bend at Well Five. So the next step is to actually work on Well Five and get the pipe brought out from underneath the building and leave the building set. They're planning on setting the building weather depending around the twenty-seven. So probably around the first of March, I would imagine, what this speaks to. Along with that, task number two or phase two of that project is the pump station upgrades. We received the ninety percent plans. Chuck and I both reviewed them. We had a meeting with the entities involved last week. The estimated cost of that portion of the project is four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. I'm likely to go into bid mid-March. So we're working with WWDL and SLID to finish off the funding for that project. But we're moving forward with that one. With the projects coming up, the ARPA grant funds, the SLID board meets next week. So we put in for Seventh Avenue and Fifth Avenue sewer projects for that. So I'll be attending those meetings Monday, Tuesday next week to support our projects. We had left it putting into, submitting for SRF ID, SRF funds in the future, getting on the intended use plan. We added two projects to that Delaware York Street project, water being replacement. And then we're looking at a new one, Sheridan Street, Rodeo Street, Water Sewer and Stream Improvement projects. We did get those put into the SLID ID, or the SRF ID, so we're just waiting to hear back whether they'll stay or not. Landfill number one remediation, we had a meeting last week with Long V Q and contract engineer for this project, Tri-Hidro. We're moving forward with that project as far as the design phase goes. They began doing some initial investigating on the site. They'll continue on through, so. And Stacy's right, the Act of Off, we've been playing around with that for the last week or so. I think it really can be a good deal, especially on the project management side. We did get one part where we can manage all our projects like these through that. I did keep better track on our budgets and things like that with the software. The work order, work request side, it's interesting, it's kind of fun, actually. I'm not a computer guy, but it has been kind of fun dealing with it, so.
Do you have any questions?
Two. Were we able to get the intended use plan done before the February deadline?
Yeah.
I know I sent that information on to Chuck and Danny. I think you and I were just making sure we were gonna meet that deadline.
The only two projects we have intended right now, on top of the two we already have on the intended use plan is the Delaware York.
A lot of times, if we don't get that intended use plan, we're not on any of the SLID.
The Delaware York project, plans are actually adding to for review on that one. We're just starting into some of the preliminary investigation stuff into the Delaware Sharon Street, Rodeo Street improvements, so.
The other one is on the landfill number one with the Tri-Hidro group in. I got hit up first thing this morning on questions with about three people. And they were a little irate at the beginning, wondering why we were gonna turn that, get rid of the shooting range and turn that back into a landfill. And it's trying to, like, what are you talking about? Tri-Hidro was up there this weekend doing samples or getting things ready and what people that was up there at the shooting range. And told God everyone that was up there that everything was getting moved off of that facility and getting turned back into a landfill, and that's what they were up there for. So I had to go through the whole process and explain to them that that wasn't the case. It was an old landfill. None of the stuff is being moved. And we're in a process to try to remediate the runoff that goes into the landfill. After I got them calmed down a little bit, and they go, okay, but they thought they were losing their shooting range.
Do we need to get with Tri-Hidro?
So we're planning on doing a monthly meeting with Tri-Hidro, WWDQ and us. All visit with Tri-Hidro and let them know.
Maybe they need to be a bit more clarified by.
As far as I know, there's nothing happening with that. It's to collect the groundwater and draw it out of the ground and put it into a place that's safe and let it evaporate, basically. I'll clarify what exactly the problem is.
They started getting a few citizens that use that up there, that facility, quite often up in a little uproar.
Yeah, well, I'm one of them.
And they were sitting on it all weekend until they were able to see me this.
You got blindsided.
Yeah, they, their drone work, they were doing some drone survey, is what they were doing. They did it Friday. Due to the freeze thaw effect, their equipment got knocked off when the frost started allowing, coming out of the ground allowed the equipment to move. So they had resurveying Saturday, and that's why it was up there Saturday. They didn't want to get drone shot.
I have one question too. Did the contractor get the wellhead turned?
Yes.
Okay, so no more waters running, they got it turned?
Yeah, no, they relaxed the well overnight. We thought they were going pushing out six hundred gallons a minute. When we got up there the next morning, the contractor and I both looked at it and thought, well, if it was pushing fifty gallons a minute, we'd be lucky. But after that, they did pull the wellhead valve off, reposition it and put the twelve-inch riser on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I noticed in the claims, there was like Forest Services on vehicles that were out first.
That was for Fire Department, Darren.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I can't answer that one.
Any other? Moving on to Police Chief Bowles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go over the calls here first. Weston County has had, the Sheriff's Department's had thirty-eight calls. Newcastle Police Department, forty-nine. Upton Police Department, nineteen. Newcastle Ambulance, thirteen. The Upton Ambulance, one. Newcastle, Newcastle Fire, two. Upton Fire has not had any, and Weston County Fire's had thirty. We are still working on getting the PD moved, working with the football coach to get us some folks to help move. That should be done here in the next few weeks and start getting the PD looking nice and sharp, so. Bye.
Are your new digs that you're moving into, are they all done? Because we're all waiting to barbecue in the open house and the.
We have to ask for more weather before we do that.
Are they, are you able to, they're all finished down there in the construction?
Yeah, there's a few little things they need to do. We can move in, so as soon as we get help to move everything over, we'll get the PD all moved and then we'll work on the dispatch as soon as that's set up and we can make the transition.
How were they, what are the answers on our computer lady finding a way to get, that we're working without the tower and the things you were mentioning?
I think she's getting close to getting those resolved. I don't know the exact stage she's at right now, but we should know Friday she has another meeting. So we should be getting a little closer to having a resolution resolved.
When you get there, everything's gonna be able to work?
We're not gonna move until we have everything working.
Okay.
Any other questions, Chief? City Attorney, Dublin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it turns out that Teresa Ackley, the Teresa Ackley house that we've been dealing with, the letter was not sent to her. I finally had her served in billings on February fourteenth. So that sixty-day window for demolition will, has started on the fourteenth. And that will end on the, I believe it's April eighteenth, if I'm correct. So up until that time period, obviously, we have to have signs on the house and everything else saying, you know, notice the vacay, the people can't come in for entry. And then from there, her power of attorney, no good once in house, then they will be able to, then the city will be able to actually demolish the house and clean up the lot.
Okay, Dublin, I apologize. They, I thought I had sent you an email. They've actually, Barnes or Services had demo, have demoed that house.
Say it again?
They have demoed that house already.
So the people who own the property, correct?
Sue Erickson, the P O A.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, and I think they have a buyer too.
Well, that makes it much easier.
Absolutely. That's a good thing.
There's still an abandoned car on the property.
I have no. Anything else, Dublin?
That's everything, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Any questions for city attorney? Any standing committee reports? There is somebody meeting this week, right?
Yes, Thursday, four-thirty here at City Hall Cemetery Committee meeting to discuss the changes to the ordinances in the cemetery master plan.
Any other standing committee report? Any other business? We do have tomorrow at six o'clock that special meeting regarding dispatch here. We'll get together and get that agenda, so we'll have the agenda out for you guys.
Do we have an idea who's coming?
It's open to the public. Six o'clock here. Any other business? Claims against the city dated February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Your Honor, I move this August body pads bill. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discretion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna adjourn, let's keep you there.
Second. A motion to adjourn and second, any further discretion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Adjourn at three o'clock.